We're recording. All right, we'll go and get the meeting called to order here. Welcome everybody to the Madison City Planning Commission Thursday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Okay, we'll double check here. So first item is roll call.
Weston?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Ryder?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Johnson?
Uh, here, sorry. Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Here.
Paul?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Next item is acceptance of the agenda. My understanding is we're waiting for the applicant for the first item. You see here? All right, well, okay, so we'll take the items in order. So of note, item two is requested to be continued to the April twentieth meeting. Otherwise, we'll take the agenda as published. All right, any other additions or corrections? Oh, sorry. And we're adding, okay, two, okay, performance bonds, all right? Don't let me forget when we get there. All right, thank you. So with the two corrections, we'll move forward with the agenda as published. Uh, next item is approval of the minutes from the February twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I think they approve.
Second. Roll call.
Weston?
Epstein.
Carter?
Hi.
Epstein.
Hi.
Brooks?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Paul?
Epstein.
Enough votes for the minutes to be approved. Next item is public comments for any item that is not under public hearings tonight. Uh, when you do come forward, whether it's now or with the items under the public hearings, we'll have you state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes unless. Is there any comments, uh, not for any item that is not on the agenda tonight? If not, we'll move forward with the public hearing. And the first item is the Palmer Road property, uh, plan to rezone approximately forty-one point six acres from M-two to R-four and amend the Westside Master Plan, uh, vision map. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission? Any opening comments?
Good evening. Um, my name's Brian Tucker, and I work for the Lions Group. Uh, we're out of Chattanooga, Tennessee. We're a multi-family developer. Uh, two-thirds of our product is a villa, a single-story, and then about a third is garden-style apartments walk-up. Um, and we have about eleven hundred units between Chattanooga and Knoxville, and, uh, we're just looking to join the Huntsville Market.
All right.
So I stand up here for questions or?
Uh, you can, wherever it's fine. I'll call upon you if we need you. All right, we'll have, uh, staff, the presentation.
Uh, this is a request for a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately forty-one point six acres of the sixty-three point nine acre property from M-two to R-four multifamily residential. Um, we're, they're also requesting to amend the Westside Master Plan Vision Map from industrial to mixed residential. Um, the property is, uh, south of Palmer Road, just west of Palmer Park. Um, and the applicant has indicated that they will dedicate approximately nineteen point five acres to the city of Madison via a, uh, development agreement for park purposes. That area would be developed by the city as an extension of Palmer Park. Um, the R-four area up top would be the residential and then the area to be dedicated to the city shown in the, uh, yellow box there. Sorry. There's also a, uh, two-point-eight acre ingress egress easement that transverses the middle of the property that connects the, uh, concrete plant to the south, uh, to Palmer, Palmer Road. Um, that acreage will be dedicated to the city as a right-of-way. Um, the, uh, the Westside Master Plan denotes the subject property as a mix of industrial and parks and natural area. Um, the area to be dedicated to the city is consistent with the parks and natural area place type. Uh, the proposed R-four is not consistent with either the industrial or the parks and natural area. Um, so it is being requested that the place type be changed, um, for the R-four portion to mixed residential. That place type would allow for a variety of, uh, housing types that would be consistent with that zoning. Um, the, uh, mixed residential place type allows for five to eighteen dwelling units per acre, and the R-four zoning allows for twelve multifamily units per acre and ten single-family units. The, uh, property is currently undeveloped, um, and the feedback from, uh, potential developers that have talked to the city was that the subject wouldn't be well-suited, the property wouldn't be well-suited for industrial development, um, due to jurisdictional stream that you see there as the blue line, uh, on the map, um, and potential wetlands in that area, um, that would prevent industrial development there. Um, staff is recommending approval. Um, we believe that the nineteen point five acres of parkland to be dedicated would be needed and meets the, uh, objectives laid out in the city's growth plan. Um, we also did receive the public comments via email. Uh, those were from Jeff North and Lauren Patton, and those should be in your, uh, commission packets.
Yep, thank you. All right, this one will open up for public comments.
Good evening. Jocelyn Brewer, District Four, Taylor's Crossing subdivision. Um, I'm here to speak about, um, what was just discussed. I would like you to stick, um, with the master plan when it comes to the industrial development. I did hear about the stream and the wetlands, um, but I want to voice some concerns. Um, we don't have much industrial zone property left. It is more cost-effective and gives taxpayers greater advantages monetarily and also for sustainability of our community. Palmer Road is my go-to at high-traffic times. It's the only way through town from West Side when Mill Creek is under construction, out of school, or during high-traffic times. That said, I still try not to travel at night or when it's raining. Palmer Road has dark, narrow roads with no shoulder, and they do flood during rains. We need to get our infrastructure in place before we make it more dangerous to drive and put more citizens on our roads. Superintendent Nichols mentioned at the last school board meeting that we need to be very careful with our numbers now and into the future. Wouldn't it be nice to have more businesses for our residents to work at, right here within our city limits, using less of our resources, just like the master plan intended? It's important to have a good mix, and this zoning keeps the balance in place. One reason we chose our home is because it was located close to Research Park. However, we soon learned that wasn't the case during peak hours. Luckily, my husband took a job at an office near the airport. He can come home during lunch and for online Zoom meetings. It makes a big difference in our quality of life, and I believe it would make a big difference for others as well, and why a certain amount of industrial was planned for our city in that particular area of Palmer Road. Let's keep it that way. I'm here tonight because I want to listen to the arguments and questions brought up this evening regarding the Palmer Road property rezone. I hope we are all here tonight because we want what is best for our city long-term, not just where the money maker is currently for the builders, residential. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other public comments? All right, closed public comments, comments from the commission?
I have some comments.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, about this property, uh, I have a concern just about putting, um, I think it was three hundred and eighty-six or something like that. Uh, is that, is that close to that, that many, three hundred and fifty-six, um, apartment units there? You know that we have re, um, amended the Westside Master Plan a number of times, and that's okay. And I voted sometimes yes to amend it and sometimes no. Um, I always keep an eye on parks and natural areas, and I think that in this case, that's not a concern. If the property is dedicated to, uh, Palmer Park, then that will mitigate that somewhat. But, um, there is a concern about property that the school system is counting on being one thing, and then it's switched to being something else. Um, I know that Dr. Nichols, uh, came, I, I spent a fair amount of time researching times when Dr. Nichols was then to city council, and he was there in twenty twenty stating that based on everything the city had in the plans, they felt like they would be okay for the next seven years or so. Um, but he has concerns about changes in the zoning and things like this. I reached out to him today to say, do you have, I just said, this item is on the agenda. I sent him the staff report, and I said, do you have any concerns about that? And he said, this is exactly the kind of thing that worries me when you take property that's not zoned residential and you turn it into residential, particularly R-four. Um, I asked if I could quote him on that, and he said yes. Um, so there's definitely a concern there for the school system that there would be, you know, possibly a hundred or more students there. Uh, Palmer Road is, is a narrow road, and then we have the whole, you know, just issue of the traffic that would be increased by, by a large apartment complex. So I think that my biggest concern for this property is turning it into apartments. That's not something the school system counted on. I went back and looked at the last two years since he spoke at the city council meeting where he said in twenty, in December of twenty twenty, based on everything that they've accepted, he thinks they're going to be okay. And so I just, I made a list of several things with the, with the Kaiser project, uh, Royal Drive Town Homes. There were ninety-eight, uh, townhomes that we approved, um, and, uh, and you know that in Oak, the village of Oakland Springs, we turned, uh, a parcel that was supposed to be eighty-two homes into three hundred residential cottages, right? So that's certainly more than the school system expected. Everstead, which is just right over there, um, that was not anticipated, and now that's two hundred and thirty-one rental units. Um, in August, we rezoned from the, uh, Westside Master Plan. Um, the property at Huntsville Brown's Ferry, we rezoned to two, uh, two hundred and nineteen stacked flats and townhomes. So we, we've already added, you know, about eight hundred apartments, townhomes, cottages, things like that. That doesn't count the fifteen hundred apartment complexes. You know, the thing at, uh, Town Madison, it, it makes a lot of sense because there's a lot of, um, business there. There are restaurants there. You have apartments. Um, and, and Mary Beth has mentioned many times at Town Madison that, um, those, those apartments are geared more towards, um, singles, uh, professionals, one- and two-bedroom type things. Um, but now we're, we're venturing outside of Town Madison. We, so we already, you all can see all across town, um, the apartments that are going up. And they're not just going up in Madison. Um, even the gentleman here who spoke was referring to wanting to get into the Huntsville Market, and I, and maybe I would hope that he would get into the Huntsville Market rather than the Madison Market. Um, but we've already made changes to the Westside Master Plan to the tenant of about eight hundred extra apartments and townhomes, not counting Town Madison. I'm talking about Oakland Springs and Everstead and Huntsville Brown's Ferry. So for me, another three hundred and fifty apartment units, I'd rather wait and see how the occupancy goes for the apartments we already have on the books than, than to add more apartments. That's all.
I've got a few. Um, I know Cory wants the extra land. Um, but we've just bought Ms. Powell's place, and there's like forty-five acres of, of land that, that the city will develop and use. We recently expanded Palmer Park to the east of the soccer fields, and I know they flood. Um, but, you know, there's another, what, thirteen or so acres we, we added to Palmer Park. And the other thing that we have out off of Brown's Ferry and, um, I forget the name of the neighborhood now, that's dedicating twenty-five acres, uh, to the city. Um, you know, that will be developed into parks and stuff. So I believe our parks and recreation have a big opportunity to expand services. Now, whether Palmer Park itself has to be expanded to find storage space, I guess I can't debate that. But, but, you know, I don't think we need another eighteen acres if it means taking on a bunch of apartments. One point two miles from where this site is is a, a county, uh, piece of land on Hardyman, uh, that's going to have, um, two hundred and forty-three, uh, detached rental units built on it. You know, right behind, uh, the Dairy Queen. And so the plans, the Brown's Group plans, oh, I mean, there's a lot of land in Madison that's still zoned, uh, in the county that hasn't been annexed, and people are building all over Madison, uh, on the, those lands, so they don't have to, they don't care about being in the city. So in terms of looking at the load of people we have to worry about in terms of traffic, providing public safety and everything else, it's, it's not just Madison residents that we have to, you know, we have to worry about. We've got an awful lot of, I call them non, non-Madison residents, but they use all of our facilities and, and stuff, so I, I'm not, you know, the final thing that just bothered me is that when you look at the concrete plant, um, SRM Concrete, they're going to be driving concrete trucks right between those apartments.
Mm-hmm.
And, and concrete is, is, uh, one of our, that stuff's being used all over North Alabama, and it's not going to go away anytime soon. So I would expect SRM to keep chunking those trucks up and down the road. You know, at one point in time, they were running twenty-four-seven when we were building Town Madison and had to get a, um, permission for them to work after hours to drive those trucks. So if I lived in those apartments, I wouldn't want to mess with those trucks. Anyhow, that's my two cents.
I've got a couple of comments as, as well. Actually, quite a few years ago, I floated the same sort of idea that Mr. North, uh, floated about taking and talking to Sequoia about using that whole front end to extend, extend into, uh, Palmer for soccer fields and that sort of stuff because of the shortage that we had. And I guess at the time, we weren't on good terms with Sequoia because the city didn't want to go talk to him. It was prior to the people we happen to involve with planning now. Um, the concern I would have, two parts of, of this. One of the reasons I made that proposal before was that I'd been in the back end of Palmer Park when, when really severe storms come up, and when that park is full, you can't get out. I spent, and a lot of people with me spent forty-five minutes there while that storm blew through because we had no way to get out of there because it, the roads were choked by, you know, the front end, uh, baseball or soccer, whatever was going on. And part of the idea was to be able to connect in down here at the back end, down where the softball complex is, and connect over so you could go out that road that goes into Sequoia. Uh, but that aside, I share the concerns about, uh, the fact that Sequoia's still going to be there. You're going to be building these homes, uh, in, in that area with concrete trucks going up and down all the time. Uh, that doesn't seem to be a, a good proposition for anybody to buy that, uh, buy into that. Uh, and again, I share, uh, uh, the other concerns, just with a number of, of townhomes, apartments, and things like that. If you drive into Huntsville, you go north of, of, of Madison, and there are apartments going up all over the place. Um, there, you can't drive in any direction at this point anymore without running into new constructions, netted apartments, or, or townhomes or something. Um, so from that perspective, you know, this just doesn't seem to gel well with me.
All right. I have a curiosity question. That road to Sequoia, is it gated across? Is that, is it a public road that's gate for, I mean, it has a... Okay. So it is that road we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, it wouldn't be gated. It would be, y'all would have permission to, they would come through it and, okay. Okay. Any other comments from the commission or questions for staff? Yes?
It's the record accurate. Um, the Everstead project, um, was not a change in zoning. She didn't say that it was. But in terms of the school district and planning and what we built in for the growth committee, that property has been zoned R-four for a very long time. So we had built into our analysis for the school district when we did that, that that property would develop. Likewise, the Madison Farms project that you mentioned, um, or maybe it was Mike that mentioned it, up on Huntsville Brown's Ferry, um, right next door where the park acreage is coming in. Um, that property was also anticipated to be rezoned as part of our growth committee analysis. Um, the Capstone project that you mentioned that went from the eighty-two to the three hundred, that was different. But, um, the, you know, as part of that analysis that we did for the growth committee, we assumed not only rezoning of land that was agricultural, but we also assumed property would be annexed into the city. That's not happening because of the growth policy. So I think there have been some changes, um, but it's not a wholesale change that one might think based upon, um, the projects that you cited. Um, it's been very, very limited, um, in terms of any kind of difference from what the assumptions were that we made for that growth committee analysis.
All right. We need two motions tonight. Uh, first is for, uh, amending the Westside Master Plan, and then the second is for the recommendation to city council for the rezoning.
I'll move to approve the Westside Master Plan, um, amendment.
Second. Roll call.
Weston?
Nay.
Carter?
Nay.
Nay.
Hi.
Mr. Brooks?
Nay.
Mr. Johnson?
Nay.
Mr. Paul?
Nay.
Mr. Peter?
Nay.
Mr. Paul?
Nay.
All right, I count eight nays and one yays. Uh, second, I need a motion for the second item, recommendation to city council for rezoning from M-two to R-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Weston?
Nay.
Carter?
Nay.
Mr. Ryder?
Nay.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Brooks?
Nay.
Mr. Johnson?
Nay.
Paul?
Nay.
Peter?
Nay.
Paul?
Nay.
All right, motion fails. Uh, clarification with staff, this will still go to city council if elected and right? Okay, all right, so public can, uh, look for this possibly again at city council for further discussion. All right, next item on the agenda is item number three. I apologize, let me turn my page over here. Bradford Station, Phase Two, final plat for forty-six lots on seventy-seven acres is the applicant here and wish to address the commission. All right, seeing none, staff?
This is the final plat for forty-six lots, with the smallest lot being four thousand nine hundred and six point three square feet. Uh, the proposed plat will include the extension of Rugby Drive and additional eight hundred and ninety-eight point seven-six linear feet. Uh, proposed construction of three hundred and eighteen linear feet of Lourdes Road and four hundred and thirty-one point six-five linear feet of Little Britton Street. Uh, the preliminary plat for Phase Two was approved in April of last year. Subject property is zoned R-three and is designated as mixed residential and parks and natural area in the Westside Master Plan. Uh, the project is consistent with the preliminary plat and all regulations, and staff recommends approval with contingencies. Uh, we just need signatures and a map symbol and a performance bond.
All right, thank you. I'll open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve, subject comments.
Second. Roll call.
Weston?
Hi.
Carter?
Hi.
Ryder?
Hi. Hi.
Brooks?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Paul?
Hi.
Mr. Peter?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Madison Farms subdivision layout plan for two hundred and ninety-two residential lots and commercial and parks and common area, uh, ninety-seven point eight-five acres. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right, staff?
It's a request for a layout plat for ninety-seven point eight-five acres. Uh, the subject property is on traditional neighborhood development and is located south of Huntsville Brown's Ferry, west of Morris Drive. Uh, the proposed subdivision includes one hundred and thirty-one townhome lots and one hundred and sixty lots for single-family detached dwellings. Uh, there will be two out, out parcels planned at the entrance of the subdivision, uh, Huntsville Brown's Ferry. Out parcel one will be developed with a minimum of thirty-three thousand square feet of commercial space. And out parcel two will consist of up to eighty-four stacked flats. Um, there are eight proposed park areas, uh, most notably Park One, located in the northeast section. Will be for, uh, the use of the public and dedicated to the city. That park has an area of twenty-three point one-three acres, and overall, the project includes almost twenty-seven acres of open space. Um, there are five common areas primarily for stormwater management, and there will be a landscape buffer along the edge of the single-family areas. Um, the layout is consistent with the final concept plan that was approved in August of twenty twenty-two, and staff recommends approval.
All right, open it up for public comments?
The commission, Donnie Spencer, one-one-three-six-nine, Morris Drive. I don't really have any comments about this particular layout, but I do have a comment about, uh, public comments that come to the commission through emails.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I brought this issue before y'all back in twenty twenty, uh, that I would like to see these comments read into the public record uh, because I have seen circumstances that they are not being read into the minutes or being translated into the minutes, uh, of meetings afterward. So just curious, when we have public comments, they are public, uh, but the public's not privy to them if y'all don't read them to us. So just a food for thought.
Take that, take that. And, and for the record, the two were, uh, not in favor for that previous, uh, public comment, so. Um, all right, so closed public comments, comments from the commission. I know, I think I have at least one. I'm trying to...
What's a stacked flat?
Okay, is it for sale or for rent? Okay.
I was, I was going to say, I looked it up, and I, I looked up the definition of stacked flat when I was looking at this, and it said it was living area and the bottom and bedrooms on the top, so is that... Yeah, was?
I was just really, sale or rent is really the, okay, that was my question, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I just Googled it, so I didn't, I didn't know what it was.
Can you explain those to us, please? I'm happy to say.
Probably get you on mic here, so we have it in.
This is kind of warm.
Yeah, yeah, hey, my name's Henry Massey. I'm with McKinley Homes. Um, we are the applicant, um, that previously got the property rezoned, um, and we're here for subdivision approval for the plat. Um, the stacked flats, it, it essentially is like a townhome. You, there's all sorts of different types of configurations, but basically you have one unit at the bottom, and then it kind of goes up to the top. It's kind of squared as very... During the rezoning, I had a bunch of fl... During the rezoning, I had a bunch of floor plans ahead, I didn't bring them today, so my apologies. But basically, they are all for sale and it is a condominium, so.
So are the individual units, do they have stairs or they don't have stairs?
They have stairs.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have a question, there's, make sure I get this oriented right. So the, there's, to the south of the property, to the south of the property, is there a road in the middle that's dead-ending into that green space? Okay, what is, what is that? Just a dead-end road or... Looks like we're connecting to two streets but not the third street, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah.
And now it'll just be a dead-ended street is what we're... On the south side, will not connect. Okay. Okay. We're okay with that? I probably missed that. Okay. What neighborhood is that? Nature's Trail to the south?
It's Nature's Trail.
Is that one? I just don't know what that is. First, I thought it was a common area, but like a green space or something. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Can we get a ballpark figure of the average house per square footage of this area?
Ballpark figure, I'm sorry, a ballpark figure of the average square footage for this area?
Uh, these units will be around 1,400 square feet. You talking about for the condos?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, for the condos, yes, about 1,400 square feet. Townhomes will be approximately 1,800 to 2,000 square feet. And, you know, obviously they're all going to be for sale.
I understand your question. We have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Roll call.
Western?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
Speaker?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So at this point, the public hearing is closed and I believe we had two items, two performance bonds. If you can bring those up, I'll read them off when we get on them. So the first item is Bradford Station subdivision Phase One, subdivision performance bond for $43,000 and change.
Move to approve.
Aye. Roll call.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Next item is Bradford Station subdivision Phase One sidewalk performance bonds for $33,000 and change.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Question carries. All right, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
There we go.